Ready? Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda for today is approval of our agenda.
See, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question on the, before we get to that, on the consent agenda, there's the item on the change fund request. And it's kind of a technicality, it says, but it says request and it has check mark, approve a new change fund in the amount of the, of, and the hundred dollars should be upward of is, and the custodian of the fund will be, and that's got the hundred dollars there. So the custodian of the fund is a hundred dollars. Custodian of the fund is, who manages it.
So we need to change that.
Well.
All right, see what you're saying.
So the hundred dollars should be on line one, and then who's in charge of it should be on line two.
I see the custodian who's signed down below is Diane Clark.
Well, why don't we put her name up there?
Yeah, okay, we'll do it.
Okay? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. If we could do that in the correction.
Make that correction. We have a motion for the agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
This is the regular agenda too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard on any issue that is not on the agenda for the day? Seeing none. Approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Approve minutes of the March 3rd and 10th meetings.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Got a little discussion on that though.
Okay.
Let's see. March 10th, on the last paragraph, not quite the last paragraph, on page three, was there a unanimous consent to study out that Otter Tail thing?
Yes.
There wasn't. It wasn't unanimous, okay. Very good, thank you.
The earlier letter, there was another letter to the watershed district that was not unanimous, but the Otter Tail.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, departmental update. Probation Department of Corrections, Shelley Ford and Janelle Cheney. Morning ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
I should probably take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Janelle Cheney. Started as the district supervisor in October, so just kind of getting familiar with that role, I guess.
Good, well, welcome, welcome. Go ahead ladies.
All right. Well, I did send over a little bit of an update. I have not done this for a while, so would you like me to go through this, or would you like to just ask me questions on it?
Usually if you just pick up the highlights.
Yeah.
Which you don't have to read, so to speak, but if you want to just kind of.
And I just did the report. Janelle obviously is our district supervisor, and we do have the felony office here in Moorhead also, but I did the report just mainly on the court services, the probation office. Just kind of listed a little bit of what we do. We supervise both the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor, adult offenders in the county, as well as all juvenile offenders in the county. Felony office covers all the felony offenders, as well as some of the supervised release, releases coming out of the state correctional facilities. So our office also supervises the two reentry services coordinators that we have in the county that work with juveniles coming home from out of home placement, as well as juveniles in the community trying to prevent out of home placement. And that, that program is totally grant funded at this point. So I just listed our staff there. We have had some changes in the last couple of years. We have like three juvenile agents, we have three of us that covered the adult files, and then we have one agent that covers drug court in our office. The two transitional coordinators in our support staff. And I just listed a little bit case load numbers. I should, there was one error on this, on the adults. The 172 are the ones that are actively supervised right now in our office. We also, we have about 300 that we're actually monitoring in our office for adults. The felony office has about 722, last count. What we're seeing as far as trends, in this last year, we had about a 25% increase in the pre-sentence investigations, and those are mainly the domestic violence offenders coming through court. We also had an 18% increase in new adult cases, and the trend there is both the domestic violence cases are increasing, as well as gross misdemeanor DUIs that we took over supervision of. Our community work service program, we continue to coordinate that in the county. Juveniles completed almost 4,000 hours last year at nonprofits in the community. Our adults completed almost 700 hours in various sites. And this does not include the STS program. Those are separate hours. We continue with the juvenile offender restitution program. We paid out about $5,300 in 2014. Those funds come from our adult supervision fees that we charge, and use those funds to repay victims of juvenile crime only. Drug court, domestic violence court, we continue to be actively involved in both. Like I mentioned before, we have one agent that covers drug court, both here in Clay County, as well as Becker County. Reentry services program, I did mention that a little bit. Currently, we're working with about 28 youth in the community. Our funding is secured through December 31st of this year, so we will be looking again for grant funds, or seeking other funding. Annual objectives, I listed there. Those have not changed much over the years. I mean, we continue to try to develop programming in the community, correctional programming. Probation services have gone more and more towards evidence-based best practices, like everything else is. And Janelle probably can speak on that.
I know that there's been a lot of training provided for evidence-based training, specifically motivational interviewing is on the forefront. The agents get together, they have the opportunity to get together at least once a month and go over that practice that it seems to be the foundation of meeting with clients and working towards change with those clients, change of their behavior, and so we can look at reducing recidivism rates. We're also looking at some of the risk assessment tools. We continue to do the, use the LSCMI primarily for sex offenders. They're looking at going to a different risk assessment tool that is more specific to that population, and that kind of covers the foundation of the evidence-based practice. So that's huge on the, on the plate right now.
Just a quick question. On grants for the reentry, do you have any feel how that's looking, or?
I talked to.
I assume we struggle with that, you know, every time, but we've, so far, we've been successful, so do you get any feedback on that yet?
I talked to our grant manager about two weeks ago from OJP. Right now, he has not seen anything, but it's still early for them to get their federal funding established, so hopefully by May or June, we'll know something as far as whether we can even have like an extension of the current funds that we have now. If we don't use them all, we can extend into next year, or new grants. It's always stressful.
Pretty much the same situation every time, so.
Yeah, certainly stressful for this two staff that are employed by the program, not knowing, so.
And it's a good program, so hopefully we'll be able to keep it going, so.
Yeah.
Are there questions for these ladies? Where do you fit under in our staffing thing? Where's, you come under, who do you come under? I mean, who's your next supervisor, or you? I mean, I'm going to our thing here that you, that we put out, who, is she on the proba, juvenile, or?
Mr. Chair, if you, I see you're looking over here. These are state employees.
Oh, they're state employees?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Excuse me.
They supervise five county employees, though, that are county employees, but they are a separate entity. Now Shelley comes to our managers' meetings and different things, but, and.
Well, I know, I've seen her around, it's, okay, here.
They're state employees.
You know, the longer you get on this commission, the more you learn. And we pay a portion, and the state pays a portion.
They're considered our contract office, but state employees.
Okay. They're state employees, but there still is a county investment into a lot of the work that they do in terms of financial.
Yes.
Thank you.
A lot like extension. You're on extension.
Yeah, right, okay.
And we contract with them as well. That's why when somebody says, how many departments are there in county government? I said, well, depending upon if you want to include the state ones that we partner with, there's probably 18 to 22 different departments that we work with, so.
Sorry, Shelley, I didn't.
Oh, that's, that's okay, I wasn't quite sure where you meant, but, yes. The state pays about 31% of our salaries. The county picks up the rest, and the county picks up all our secretary, secretary, or salaries, and the two reentry people are grant funded.
Okay. I think we keep arguing about that. The state's supposed to pay more than 31%, aren't they?
Yes.
But somehow, they never seem to come through with their, what they say they're going to, so.
I know the auditor just billed them for 50%, but they'll only get what they're receiving. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's all going to be like 50%. I think the loss is 50.
Yeah, but who's paying, who's paying attention to that?
Yeah.
Any other questions for these ladies?
Thank you for your.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion regarding appointments to the Wild Rice Watershed District Board. Brian?
Chairman.
And Kevin Rude.
Mr. Chair, this is really the Wild Rice Watersheds. We didn't know where we were going, if Kevin was going to be here or not. That's why I put my name down, just to get this conversation going, but badly turned over to Kevin.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here.
Glad to see you all again. Been a while.
Yes.
I do have, out in the audience, I think you received an email from Ms. Reek, that Sharon Askelson, I'm hoping is interested, as I see there aren't any other applicants here. Every three years, we come back and ask you folks to appoint new watershed managers, and it's that time of the year again, so I'm looking for you folks to come up with a replacement. I don't know if you're all familiar, but your area includes Clay and Becker, and in the past, I always say that Clay has always appointed one from Clay, and has the option to appoint a second from either Clay or Becker. And in the past, you have consistently appointed someone from Becker, but that, by no means are you locked into that. So with that, John Ostenson has moved from Clay County into Becker County. I did ask John if he was going to re-up, or try to get in as a Becker, and John said, I've had enough. I'm going to farm. And so John's not running. Dwayne Erickson is the Becker County appointee, and the last time I talked to Dwayne, he was straddling the fence. He told the people that pushed him to get on six years ago, he's undecided.
Okay, last night, around nine o'clock, I got a call from Dwayne Erickson. He is interested. He wants to run for it.
Okay.
And I also got a call from Kim Severson, from the Ulin area. He's also interested in running for the board, so, and I know Sharon is also interested in it, so we have three people interested in that position. Dwayne is from Becker County.
Correct.
He lives in Becker County, so, I mean, I don't know what the procedure is. I guess, I haven't been on the board since we've done this, I guess, and what our procedure's going to be, when we, we need two, we got three applications, so.
Mr. Chairman, first off, what, what's our deadline on this?
You have to appoint by your last meeting in April.
Okay. Typically, what we've done is when we've had more than, than the required number, we ask them to come in and, and answer some questions, do a little interview with them, and from there, it's the board's discretion as to who they.
I know that's what we did for Buffalo, excuse me. I know that's what we did for Buffalo, you know, and I told Dwayne and Kim both last night, when I checked the agenda, it was just going to be a discussion today, there'd be no interviews or anything like that, so otherwise, they would have been here, but they, I told them it won't be interviews today, and I'd let them know if there are going to be interviews or stuff like that.
Well, if there's more, if there's more than two, then, then definitely, we should set up an interview, and I think in the past, we've had a list of questions, Brian, that are kind of in the record, that we kind of go back to as a starting point for, for, for the interview process.
Okay.
So I, I would suggest that that's what we do if we have more than two.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we'll get that scheduled. Do, do these people that expressed interest, do they have to, like Dwayne, does he have to reapply, or just put, you know, do they need to send us a letter, or what, what should they do, so?
Typically, we get a letter on record.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Should we contact them and?
I'll, I'll let them know, because I told my.
Let them know that we need the letter of their intent to apply for the positions and reapply for the.
Yeah, they want to know, last night, when I discussed with them, you know, I said I'd give back to them.
And so just to, to get the timing on this, so you said by the end of April?
Right. Before, before the end of April, and then we install them on our meeting the second Wednesday of May.
Well, what I would, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, is I would suggest that we hold the interview at least two weeks prior to the last Tuesday in April, just in the event that something comes up where we want to hold off another week, so that we can still make a decision.
So the first or second meeting in April would, would work, so maybe Brian and Vicki can look at the agenda and, for, you know, that's coming up, and see which one works best, and we'll schedule that, so.
When are those current managers going to quit coming, or will they come until we appoint?
That is correct. Your second, they continue on until you appoint someone else.
Okay.
Unless they resign or something like that, but until you appoint someone, the current managers continue on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Are there term limits in the bylaws?
There are no term limits.
And one other question, we can, we have two appointments. One, they can be, one from Becker, one from Clay, or two from Clay. What has the precedent been over the past several years regarding an appointment one from each county? I mean, do you know offhand?
Well, like I said earlier, Wayne, the past has been that Clay County, and I like the way you folks clearly stated in your ad, that one will be from Clay, and then the second can be either from Clay or Becker. My understanding, I know the, three years ago, then my understanding is, is that Becker County Board recommend, excuse me, recommended Mr. Erickson, and I'm thinking back, six years ago was the same. Prior to that, I can't say, but my understanding is, is that you've always, because that'd be about right. Because it used to be that Becker County had their own appointment, but then we had a rearrangement by Bowser.
And they did bring forward Mr. Erickson's name last, I think, when we first appointed him, so.
Yep.
So, has Becker County, they're aware that we're in this process again, so if they had, okay.
Yeah, they are, because he's going to talk to Barry Nelson.
So it's probably in our best interest to appoint one from each, I would think.
As long as we have interest from Becker County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, I guess I would maybe move that we do those interviews, the, our first meeting in April, which would be April 7th, just because if you have a manager that wants to get off to do, get back to farming and field work, since he's graciously offered to continue to serve until we appoint someone else, it would be in his interest, and maybe the, the rest of the board to get, get those done sooner rather than later.
I'll second the motion.
Get a motion and a second to conduct the interviews, the first meeting in April. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Good, we'll do it.
All right, I will see you then.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
I come and listen. I want to see what the other thing, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve, come on up. Consideration for redesign of the West Central Regional Juvenile Center building to accommodate increased population.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Steve.
First of all, thank you guys for, for having me here today. As you mentioned, we are looking at requesting a entry into an hourly contract with the Michael J. Burns Architect Firm. They were the associate architects on our original build back in 96 and 97, and so we're actually fortunate that the, the original architect is still with the agency, so they have the blueprints and a lot of the understanding and knowledge of what happened back then. As you mentioned, we're really seeing an increase of the usage in our facility. We don't really feel that we're spiking, because our, our usership has been pretty consistent, and we're really trending upward, and I think part of that can be attributed to our treatment numbers of the, of our 30, 60, 90, and 120 day beds have increased. Our pathways, sex offender program has had an effect on our population. And of course, in, in January of this year, we added Fargo, or North Dakota residents, and their six nap beds certainly has pushed our, our usership up. So, look, we've worked with the Department of Corrections over the last six months with our, with our facility, and, and looked at the different issues with that. We've had an increase in our secure population, licensed bed numbers already, from, from 24 beds to 30, and our non-secure program has, has gone from 14 beds to 15 beds. And the Department of Corrections said, based on the current setup of our facility, they wouldn't be allowed to, or we wouldn't be able to add any additional beds based on where we're at. Currently, our, in, in 2015, we're averaging 26.54 kids per day in detention. Our non, our, excuse me, our membership usage from Minnesota has been steadily increasing since August of last year. We've been averaging over 20 and a half kids per day, and so when you add Fargo into that mix, we've, we've seen quite a, quite an increased population from where we've been. We've been fortunate to this stage, we have not turned down any of our member counties. Takes a great deal of collaboration with our supervisors, and frankly, we've been fairly lucky that kids just haven't come in when we've been at, at or near capacity. And so that's what we're looking at, in from a secure standpoint. Our non-secure youth have been averaging 13.53 kids per day. It's really been pushed by our men, our mental health issues, our evaluation program. Average is about 30 kids per year, and right now, we're on pace for, for 51 kids in that program. And so that's, that's been a pretty big challenge. Those mental health kids we're seeing are, are coming in, and they're not leaving after a day or two, they're staying with us for, for, for days and weeks at a time. We've, we've roughly turned down 12 kids in, in the non-secure program, and again, some of those kids have been Clay County kids, and so that certainly is a, is an issue for us, and making sure that we can, we can meet the needs of, of the issues. I think some other important things, just for the board's consideration, certainly we want to meet Clay County's needs first and foremost. Secondly, we want to be able to meet our memberships, usage, both in, in our secure program and our non-secure programs. In, in secure, our membership program, our membership counties have been with us through thick and thin, and, and some of that time recently has been thin, and we want to make sure that we are, we continue to be able to provide services to them. And we have to look at our growing population in the Fargo-Moorid area. It certainly isn't going down, and if we're already struggling to meet the needs of our, of our users, that's only going to increase. We've got a different, this, the early winter, late winter, we were notified, the Minnesota Department of Corrections, the state of Minnesota runs two programs, two youth programs in Minnesota, the Red Wing Program and Red Wing Minnesota, which generally takes on the tougher kids, so it's not a real impact on, on our numbers. But they also are in the Thistle Dew Program, which is 21 days, and 105 day program, and we were notified this late winter that, that January, or excuse me, at April, the end of April's going to be the last program they're going to send through their, through their facility. And so while not every kid's necessarily going to meet the criteria, I know that our, our 10 county or 11 county membership is a high user of Thistle Dew, and we're certainly going to have an impact, whether that's through more kids in our programming, or whether that's through kids waiting in detention for a longer period of time, because there's fewer placements for probation agents each at the place. And I think we're seeing a change in judicial philosophy also. There's a period of time, about five years ago, when, when our economy started to struggle, and there were fewer placement dollars, kind of coincided with, with judges not wanting to place kids, and I think that we're seeing a change across the state of Minnesota, that, that kids are, are being placed again at a much higher rate than, more similar to what they were back in the early 2000s. And so I think it's just probably responsible government, just supposed to take a look and see what the cost would be, and the options would be for our facility, and, and entering this contract would, would give us that opportunity to look at different options that we have.
What's the contract say?
Brian's got that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Campbell, Kerry from Michael Burns did send over a contract for an hourly rate, and what, what we wanted to do was ask your permission to approve that contract based on county attorney's review, of course, but it's for an hourly rate, and I guess we haven't really talked about how many hours or anything. I suppose that's up to, to Steve and, and your guys' guidelines, how long you want to go into it. There was no cap on the contract, just an hourly rate.
Well, they haven't had a chance to look at any of this yet, so.
We, we've been on one occasion, just briefly, just to kind of talk a little bit about what we've shared today.
So they'll probably have a better idea in the near future, how much time it's going to take, but it should be helpful to have the person who originally dealt with it.
Right.
To deal with it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would think that they can give us some sort of an idea in, in terms of hours. I mean, that's, that's, that's part of what they do, is they also, when architects do things, they, even at the start, they, they talk about getting you through a preliminary stage and anticipate a certain number of hours, so I, I just don't, I don't know, we just want to give them an open hourly deal here to move on. I'd like to have an idea of what they're talking about.
Can you do that, Steve? Have them give us an estimate of, of what, the number of hours that they.
Sure. I'll reach out to Kerry.
Think it will take to, to deal with this, and because I don't think there's any question, we need, we need to do something about this, but, but we do need to have some idea what, where they're looking at.
Well, we need, we need to do something about it, but at the same point in time, we need, we need to, we need to have it be manageable in terms of price. You're not going to do it at any price, and that's, that's the issue.
Mr. Chair, were you looking for action today by this board?
I think we were hoping to, to receive approval for, to enter into hourly contract, and if that changes, if this board wants a specific number with that, with that contract.
Will that set you back?
I suppose it would for a period of, at least another board meeting.
Well, I think, I think we do need to have an idea, at least an estimate of, of how much time they're looking at, so if you can get the, if you can contact them, get that back to us by next week, we should be able to, you know, get it approved then, and.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair, and that doesn't have to be an exact number of hours.
No. No. I, I guess what you can tell, are, are we in agreement as a board that we need to move forward with this?
Sure is possible.
You know, at least.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, and I, you know, if this, if this is something about holding back or, or not allowing stuff, you know, we could, we could do a preliminary thing that says, if, if they were actually planning on doing some work this week for a few hours, we can approve the hours this week, but then come back with.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need to be delaying, it's not the intent to delay, it's, the intent is to find out how much this is going to cost.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Chair, were they looking at, were you looking at having them do some work this week?
I think they've been waiting, I think they've been waiting for the, for the approval to, to drop some initial plans.
Why don't we go ahead with giving them some time this week?
Preliminary.
Then Kevin come back.
Well, let's do so, so what, fifteen, twenty hours?
Yeah.
Let's, well, somebody want to make a motion for a number of hours for this week?
Mr. Emmett, I, I would, I, I would move that we authorize up to, um, twenty hours of, uh, work, um, on the part of, of, um, preliminary design work, or whatever you want to call it, um, until such time as they can bring back to us a better overall picture of, of anticipated hours involved with the project.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to that, Kevin, to see what you think of it. Um, if Steve have the authority by this board, if they need more than twenty hours this week until next Tuesday, if he have the authority to give them the go-ahead to do that.
Well, then why do it at all? Then, then why do it at all? Why?
Well, twenty hours is a fair amount of.
Since it is, it's Tuesday.
Yeah.
It's already on Tuesday.
Yeah, so, that's.
I see what, what Wayne's, Wayne's saying, but I, I think if we do cap it at twenty, I just, I don't want it to be frivolous work, I, not that it will, but if we only give them a set number of hours, they maybe, um, will stick to that.
I, I would think with, with this being Tuesday already, that to give them twenty hours of work to do this week, I'll, I'll second you. They'll be happy.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, and I, I guess I think that, you know, who knows, maybe twenty hours is enough for.
The whole thing.
To do what they want to do, so, you know, so, I mean, they're not starting, you know, they're, they're redesigning that, something they've already worked on and done, so.
Right.
Okay, we, uh, any further discussion? Brian?
Mr. Chair, would you like it dropped back then with the maximum, a dollar amount? I know you want an estimate on the hour, but you can see a thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah, see, after, after you let them know, we approved the twenty hours, I guess then see how much, you know, what's their estimate, if it takes more than the twenty hours, what's their estimate of the additional time it will take to do it?
I, I don't think we're looking for a hard, firm number.
No, we don't.
I think what we're looking for is some sort of a calculated estimate that would make sense.
Is it twenty hours or is it two hundred hours? I mean, that's, you know, what are they estimate it'll take to do it, what we're asking them to do, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
You know, and Mr. Emmett, the, the ultimate deal on this is, you know, because we got it, we got to determine how many, with what they want to accomplish, how many more beds would it get us?
Yeah.
And so how much are we.
Right.
Investing to get.
Right.
Say it's, if it's only four or six more beds, and we're putting in a half million dollars, isn't making any sense.
Yeah.
That's the point. So we need to be able to see the entire picture here.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, Highway Department, uh, oh, no, Department Update.
Joe.
Yeah, Joe, sorry. Joe Olson, Highway Department.
Morning, Joe.
Update. Or, uh, Building Maintenance.
Building Maintenance.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Hey, Joe.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Well, what I'm going to do here is, uh, try to take you guys through a little, um, update on, uh, what we do and how we function and kind of, uh, what we've been working on this, this year, so I'll start off with kind of talking about my crew a little bit. We have, uh, seven people in our crew, counting myself. Um, the guys that we have here, I believe they, they kind of carry a, a wide variety of knowledge about this campus, so, um, seems like each one of them specialize in something a little bit different, and, uh, together we, uh, we can, uh, accomplish just about anything we need around here, I think, so, um, I can't give enough credit, they, they do work pretty hard, so, um, so there's, uh, seven of us total. Uh, over at a shop that we work out of, it's, uh, the southwest corner over behind the Family Service Center. Um, over there, there's two offices, one's, uh, like a HVAC office, we can kind of control everything in this campus from that office as far as, uh, heating and cooling, and, um, the other one's my office, so, over there, we have a heated bay, three trucks and, uh, lawn tractor and a skidster. It's, uh, it's kind of a, uh, we went through and kind of painted it and cleaned it all up, so if you guys ever want to come over, take a tour, you sure can, but, um, that's kind of where we work out of, so, um, the buildings that we serve is, uh, basically this whole campus, uh, the jail, the Family Service Center, courthouse, juvenile center, and, uh, DMV. We also help out the household hazardous waste and, um, the highway a little bit, they kind of function it themselves, but we kind of go out there from time to time, so, um, how we generate half our work is through what's called a Spice Works ticketing system, and, uh, this is kind of similar to information technology services and what they use over there. Um, it's, it's a kind of an online thing that, uh, employees can submit their issues. Um, and, uh, basically, uh, I assign the tickets to everybody as, as their schedule, um, uh, as we can, um, schedule, and, uh, we try to take care of the priorities such as, uh, HVAC, you know, like the, um, heating and cooling, if it's getting too out of hand or whatever, too hot, we try to get there and, uh, take care of those, then we kind of work our way down to the, kind of the low-end stuff, so, um, it, uh, the second half is a preventative maintenance list that we've created, uh, this is kind of a list made up of pumps, air handlers, and, um, HVAC systems, plumbing, fire protections, you know, et cetera. It, it's just a list of everything around this whole campus that we need to take care of, and we have it on a kind of a set schedule. And, um, it's, uh, it kind of, we have a summer and kind of a spring changeover that generates a new, uh, kind of generates a different, uh, set of responsibilities. Um, in the summertime, we obviously, we take care of mowing and landscaping and clean, cleaning the grounds, and, uh, the winter, we take care of, uh, snow removal sidewalks, icing, um, and then also some of these systems kind of call for like a little adjustment to everything during the season changeover, so, um, the combination between the tickets and the, uh, the PM list, you know, our crew's pretty busy, so, um, you know, these guys work pretty hard, it seems like they're one step ahead, so, um, so that's kind of half of our, uh, most of our work is generated. One thing I'm working on for you guys is a capital improvement plan, I know that we just ended up finishing, I think, our five to ten-year one, I think we're just about done with it, but, uh, I'm kind of starting a new one for Brian, so, um, I think it's important to keep this thing kind of ongoing, because, you know, I know we took care of a lot of stuff outside and stuff, there's a lot of internal systems and stuff that we have to do, so, so I'm, been working on that for a couple of months, but I hope to have it finished up probably within another month here, get something to Brian, so you guys can kind of look at some numbers and stuff, and, um, the critical priority ones, I'll get bids and stuff, and kind of have those numbers for you too, so.
So Joe and, um, Brian's not here, but, um, part of the direction that he gave you was, was it also to kind of chronologically, chronologically do those things in terms of, of, say, one to two years, two to three, or three to five, or something like that?
Yes, yep, what I, how I started is I just kind of wrote a list of everything, and then identified the ones that are, uh, kind of critical right now, and, um, put them in the year one, you know, there's some of them that kind of need to be taken care of ASAP, so we put those on priority one, or one to two years, and then, um, you know, there's those systems that are, they're working, you know, but they're kind of starting to stretch out where, you know, in five years, they won't be working, so, so yeah, my idea is to have, you know, that critical, critical stuff in year one and two for you guys, and what I would do is probably put together some pretty hard numbers for you, so you can look at that also.
Anything, any ter, anything in terms of your plant and the heating and cooling, um, we're going to have to probably pay special attention to, obviously, what our current plans are with, um, the, a new facility.
The new facility, yep, yep.
So you're keeping that in mind.
Yeah.
But that, but that part, that part, uh, any, you know, and it seemed to me that this board should, should take the opinion that, that any modifications to our current system to allow for that new building, those costs should fall under the new building cost.
Right, yep.
And not be a capital improvement outside of that.
Yep.
So I, so I think, you know, so as you plan that, I hope you're considering that.
Yep, in fact, it's, it's kind of a little, it's kind of a challenge right now, because I'm not sure how far the jail's out, but it's not going to be, you know, tomorrow, and so one of my challenges is some of this stuff is a little critical in that jail, so we kind of know that we just need to keep it going.
Yes.
And, uh, transition into the new jail, so, and, um, yeah, so yeah, no, I understand that fully, and once the new jail comes, it'll take care of a lot of set, my problems over there, so, but, um.
Well, and the new, at least what we're looking at now, that building would still be, be utilized.
Yeah, but my, my, my point being though is, is that, you know, this, this new building that we do, or the combination of two buildings possibly with the law enforcement center.
Yep.
That could change and really change the dynamics of your current power plant operation.
Yep, yep.
And, so, so the improvements to that for those reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Would fall under the, under the construction cost of the new building and not be in our five-year capital improvement.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah, yeah, but I just, I just think there needs to be some clear direction for all of that, so.
Yep, yep, I'll, uh, once the new plans come out for the jail, uh, and I kind of know exactly what you guys need, as far as tying into our boilers and our chiller systems and stuff, then I'll be able to, but yeah, the basic, basic, uh, rule is I try not to throw away money over there right now, when knowing it, it's in the future, so, um.
We like it when you don't throw away money.
Yes, right.
That's a good thing for the board.
Yes, I try not to do that myself, so, um, so I'll have a list for you guys anyways, a kind of a five to ten-year, and hopefully we'll be able to put something, or Brian will be able to give some insight on that too, so, um, other than that, a few projects we're working on, uh, this year, we repainted the shop and cleaned it all up, I think the guys got together, we decided we needed to kind of organize and clean it up a little bit better, so we did that. Um, the DMV heating system, if you guys remember, you, you guys approved that, it, we did a remodel last year, but, uh, shortly after, it was a second little project for our heating and cooling, and you guys approved that, that project went real well, and it's been proven that it was a, a good upgrade, because we don't have hardly any work requests, we were out there daily before, so, so I think that was a good, uh, project that we did there. The elevator project, obviously, over at the Family Service Center, uh, George is kind of running that project, she's been, uh, I don't think we've had any real major snags there, so it's going, I think they're close to fifty percent done with it right now, they hope to be done probably early summer or so, so, seems to be running pretty smooth right now, smoother than I thought it would, so, considering you've taken the whole elevator, no, but, um, uh, you heard from Steve at the juvenile center, uh, kind of sitting in on that stuff, so I kind of know a little bit about what's going on there too, so, offering to help them out whenever I can there. Uh, campus landscaping, we're going to do some work with STS out front, we're going to do some, uh, we pulled some bushes out in front of Family Service Center, we're going to try to make it a little bit more, uh, try to beautify it a little bit more, we're using extension to kind of give us some ideas on that, so, um, out the highway, uh, we went out there and helped with some landscaping last year, we're going to kind of help them out a little bit this year, and, um, we have ongoing carpet and painting replacements at the Family Service Center that we're looking at, and obviously, last on our list is the new jail, so I'm, whatever you guys, uh, whatever we plan to got, I'm willing to tie it in however I can, so.
Good, questions from Joe?
Oh, yeah, if you were available. Oh, okay, I can check it out.
Yeah. Any questions for Joe?
Want to compliment you on keeping the snow off the campus, didn't you?
Yeah.
He did a good job.
Yeah, you know, it was a little, yeah, they, thank you.
Nice job, did it, Joe.
Yes, yes, and you know, it, uh, it, it, we did deal with a little ice this year, but not much snow, so it was.
A lot of snow removal cost had to be.
Well, I think we were, yeah, I think we were, uh, we were allowed, I think, twenty thousand for the Family Service Center, twenty thousand for the courthouse, and I think we're at that twelve thousand dollar range.
Be careful, guys, we, but still get pretty.
It's still March, right?
And, and we do have the rest of next year, too, that I keep forgetting about, so, right? So we got a good start anyway, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, about three or four years ago, we had a winter like this, and I mentioned to Kevin, boy, we're really doing great on snow removal this year, and he looked at me, he said, Wayne, it's January sixth, it's only, we're only six days into the year.
It's not March.
We hadn't even started.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, let's do our committee reports, get that out of the way, Wayne.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I did have no, I had no committee meetings this week, however, yesterday, I did attend the session where Governor Dayton was here regarding railroad safety and, um, uh, roads, bridges, highways, maintenance, fixing them up and ongoing cost of it, and, uh, he had a very good plan, I have copies of it here, I'll pass around to everybody if you want to take a look at it, and, um, as you know, we don't get donations when it comes to roads and bridges, highways, so it's got to come from the taxpayers, and he has some, what I think are some pretty painless ways to take care of it, and without going into any detail, I'll let you take a look at it and see what you think. Jenny was also there, and she might have a couple of comments too, but it was well-attended, and, um, Sheriff spoke, and very well done.
Thank you. Frank?
Uh, Tuesday after the meeting, we had highway tracking, and I guess we're going to be discussing that, uh, the next thing on the agenda, one of the equipment purchases that we discussed. The other thing was, uh, they're looking at buying some land, or getting some land to put on a building for com- combining Holly and Rollock, so we looked at another option in the city of Holly, uh, besides the one option that we have been looking at, so, um, those are the two things I think we discussed there. After that, uh, highway tracking meeting, we went on a mud run, where I guess, uh, I don't know if you.
That's a good way to say it.
Kirk took us on a tour of the Clay County landfill, you know, and I would recommend that, if we do any more tours, don't do it during spring thaw, but, uh, it was a good experience going out there. It was interesting to see what's all going out there, you know, they got, got the new scale out there now, and that was, and to see that, and, uh, and all the things, when we're talking about burning off the gas and getting rid of some of the stuff like that, you know, and it's, you know, you, you hear about it and stuff like that, but until you take the tour, you really don't know what's, what's going on there, you know, and that was very interesting that he took us out there. Uh, Jenny and I went along with Kirk there. From there, we went on the perm and went through the facility down there, and, boy, there's another eye-opener there, you know, I, I guess the mostly, you've toured that place already, for me, was the first time, and I know not everybody can probably go in there and tour that place, because there, it's a busy place, you know, but, uh, like, we were, be a good place to take four-H groups or anybody that's interested in recycling or something like that, you know, to see what is all being done, you know, we just see the recycling, we put our plastics here, our glass here, and aluminum there, and that's what recycling is to us, but until you go through that facility, you really don't know what recycling is, you know, you get a, a final idea, when you see thirty trucks, uh, I mean, trailer loads of garbage coming in every day, and they process that, and it, it was just amazing to me to see, see it all going on, you know. Tuesday night, I went to Mark and Township where they had their annual election plus their meetings, uh, presentations, but Bill Burkless was out there, um, talked about the jail a little bit and stuff, and, uh, saw other, other items going on. Uh, Shannon Thompson was out there, gave a very good presentation on reci- recycling, and, and I talked about a few things there too, so it was a good, good discussion out a few things there too, so it was a good, good discussion out there with Mark and, um, Lauren always puts on a good meeting out there. Thursday, I went to West Central Initiatives down at, uh, Fergus Falls, uh, an election of officers, uh, there's a planning grant that needed submit, submitting that we worked on, and, uh, and they gave a good overall presentation of jobs in, uh, in the West Central Initiative area, and the population growth in each county, and it was interesting, uh, presentation. Uh, Thursday night, I went to Metrococh, uh, the Hall of Expansion Committee that I'm on, uh, we went over the results of our sidewalk plan there and discussed that, and looked at what procedure to go forward with there. Saturday morning, went to meeting with farmers, um, very good turnout with farmers here that Senator, um, Senator Ekin, Representative Mark Ritt, and Lean were here. There's a good discussion on the valuation of agricultural land, you know, and, uh, how it should be evaluated, you know, and then they were talking about school bond, you know, and there's a school bond, should that be evaluated on the agr- all the agricultural land or just on the homestead and one acre? So, there's a lot of different, uh, discussion items, uh, I was going to make a copy of the six items that we went over, and, uh, we'll make a copy and get that to you, uh, because that, um, Mark Ritt and Lean and, uh, Ekin, uh, said that these are the bills that they're working on and stuff like that, uh, um, they're looking on property tax refor- refunds, homestead credit, uh, they're also looking at this agricultural land and evaluating it different, you know, also looking, not just the value of the land, but what are you getting off the land, the production value, you know, there's a lot of different states doing it differently than Minnesota is, and, uh, uh, they're going to look at some of that stuff, um. Yesterday, I went to the Township Board Meeting, there again, there was a presentation by quite a few of our county people, Dave Overbow, Brian Green, Shannon Thompson, saw a lot of concentration district assessors offers, um, Bill Berkus was out there, uh, Brian was out there, gave a good presentation of what, uh, happened in 4-H people, Heartland Trail, there's a lot of present, they had a very busy meeting out there, and, uh, well, Jenny and I were both there, and, uh, they're concerned, some of the concerns that I heard from some of the people were the wetlands and all the land that's being turned over to the government that's taken out of the tax, the tax rolls, you know, there's a big concern for some of the townships that are, are looking at that, uh, trying to come forward, something that, once these lands are taken out of the tax rules or that they stay on, even though the government owned, that the government or the state pays us the tax that they got from them before, I don't know if that'll work or not, but that's-
They don't necessarily pay the full tax.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at getting some of that, uh, so, uh, it was a very good meeting, it was full, it was, it was a busy meeting, and, uh, good presentations, so, those are the meetings I had.
Kevin?
Okay, uh, as, um, was mentioned on the Highway Tracking Committee, uh, meeting, uh, Frank talked about it, we did, um, we will be talking about a couple of new replacement, um, items in the Highway Department, and we did talk about this other potential site for a joint facility for a couple of districts out in eastern part of the county, um, that remains to be seen, we're doing more study on, on the costs and those things, but that same day, we had a pick committee meeting, and, um, primarily, it was, um, dealing with some social service issues and, um, need, labor needs for, um, child protection issues are really skyrocketing and demands are really high, so I think, uh, we're going to be hearing from Rhonda today on that.
Yes, we are.
We are, so, so that'll be coming up today. On Wednesday, um, we had our diversion public outreach meeting, and that meeting, typically, we get, um, updates from the right-of-way entry people, the committees on, that go out, doing the, getting the rights of entry from landowners to be able to do different types of studies on the land. Uh, we got an update on the North Dakota legislation session, and there, I think they had like sixty-nine million dollars that was approved in the Senate, and then through the crossover, it's gone over to the House now for the, for the projects in, in North Dakota. Um, the business leaders task force, they had members of the, uh, real estate, uh, and, um, uh, the chamber were there, and, and they, the chamber's focus was being at Bismarck for the legislative issues in regards to the diversion project and supporting them, and the key topic that comes from the FM Realtors Association is the significance that's happening with this flood insur- with the flood insurance issues on all the properties that could now escalate and, and with their rates. There was some, um, discussion regarding, um, the cemeteries that are, would be in the, outside of the protected area and the staging area, and there's, um, there's eleven of them, and six of the eleven have allowed for, the necessary entry to get on, to be able to do the necessary studies to determine what the impacts would be and how they could be mitigated. of those six, two of them are North Dakota and four of them are Minnesota, there are five left that need to be done, one is in Minnesota, and that's my understanding, it's a private-
It's a family cemetery.
Family cemetery, uh, and then the other one, four that are needed are in North Dakota, and, um, so we're kind of hoping that we can get those so that we can better answer the questions that they all have on what, what could be done to mitigate under the conditions of a, of a staging area being implemented. Then the, um, they did talk about the, um, vote that's currently going on, on the Cass County side for the Special Assessment District, there was some time talking about that as well. Then on Thursday, the actual Diversion Authority, um, Board Meeting, we got the typical, um, reports from the project manager, uh, and then the Corps of Engineers gave, give their report on what they're currently working on. One of their primary, uh, roles and duties that they're working on right now, of course, is to continue to work with the Minnesota EIS system with the DNR. We did receive a, an update on the lawsuit, and the lawsuit is simply, um, that there's going, the hearing is set for March twenty-sixth, so hopefully that can be done, and, and then some decisions can be made finals that we know where we all stand in these. There are updates on a lot of the in-town, uh, in-town work that's being done, and, um, and obviously, with those in-town project, there's always amendments to the, to the projects, so, for example, what you're seeing done down by City Hall and those areas down there, they need to have amendments to their contracts, so some of those were approved. That's pretty much it from those meetings, and I am sorry that I missed that deal on Saturday morning with the Ag, I had every intentions to be there, but I, I had it in my calendar for the twenty-first for some reason, so.
It was a very good meeting with me.
Yeah, well, the first one was a really good meeting too, so I, I, I was disappointed that I missed that, so.
You got some legitimate concerns?
Yes, they do. And then, uh, tomorrow, we're going to take a tour of the jail in Alexandria, so, that's our, Building Committee's going to be doing that, so.
Jenny?
Last week, Frank and I did go to, um, Purim to tour the recycling facility and also the Clay County landfill on the way there, I echo what Commissioner Groves said, it was a fantastic tour, it definitely was helpful as we, um, continue forward with talks of potentially having one of those facilities here, and, uh, you know, Kirk is just doing a fantastic job for us, and, and we're really lucky to have, um, uh, his caliber of work ethic, uh, to, in Clay County. I also went to the Township Election Day for Kurt's Township, uh, just, it's great, those, um, citizens that give their time to help out on the township level, uh, it just really helps us out. Uh, the walking tunnel at the Family Service Center, I was able to go over there for their grand ribbon cutting, there's a lot of people that have put some time in for that, and a lot of people went and, and walked, so I encourage you to also walk if you have some free time over there. Thursday was the diversion land management meeting where, uh, it was just the, the general, uh, updates as to how they're moving forward. One concern was from the Ag Subcommittee, they're having a, a problem with lack of participation with the North Dakota farmers, uh, the Minnesota farmers are, uh, being very present and active, um, so they are looking for more North Dakota farmers that are willing to join that process and, and give their input. I've also recommended that we possibly add an additional Minnesota farmer if available, uh, sometimes it's hard to find people that are willing to give time, we all, sometimes we don't have extra time to give, so we'll see how that, um, comes together. The Soil and Water Meeting, uh, that was on Thursday as well, uh, just general business, we did, uh, get an update on the tree sales, we've, I think, surpassed our last year's tree sales by twenty-five hundred or three thousand trees, so that's great, we still have, um, extra trees, so if they want that, they can contact the office. Uh, yesterday, I did attend the meeting with Governor Dayton on the rail safety and transportation safety, and I just have to say that I really, uh, am happy to see a sitting governor come and, and put Morehead's projects in the top four projects of the state right now. Granted, uh, like Commissioner Ingersoll said, it all takes money, and, and that's, we'll see how that all comes together, uh, if approved, his, uh, budget would allow Clay County to receive a hundred and seven million dollars a year, and I think the city of Morehead's sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year, uh, and we all know that it's, it's critical, we do have four to six hours of blockage in Clay County a day, and, and that's only going to get, go upwards as the trains continue, uh, I did speak to a fireman yesterday who said, on that very day, they had a delay in a call, so it's, uh, time is of the essence in emergencies, and, and we'll do what we can to expedite those, uh, projects. And then, I also attended the end of the Township Annual Meeting with Frank, uh, good meetings, uh, one, one concern that I had from a, a resident was also on the, the governor's buffer strip initiative and, and how that relates to, um, you know, what is classified a, a ditch or body of water that they need to have a fifty-foot buffer if it's approved by the governor, um, so that will really change the dynamics of our fields, I, I realize it's for, uh, water quality, but it is a lot, fifty feet is a lot, so, uh, just appreciate getting, uh, the concerns of our, our leaders on that.
That's it?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, um, comment on the, that Ag Committee that Jenny talks about, um, it was talked about at our Diversion Authority Meeting too, and I think there's, Jenny's right that there's been a, a lack of presence by several members that were originally asked to be on that land management committee, so I think there, what was decided, what there, that there'd be communication sent, and I'm asking them if they can, want to continue to be on there or not, and if not, then, then there will be action taken to either reduce the size of the board or to find other members, uh, because we try to run all those meetings right now with quorums, and so when some of those, whether they're North Dakota members or whatever, when they don't show up, and there's no quorum, you get nothing done, and every, it's a waste of everybody's time, so I agree, and I, I think it's a good idea if we can get another Minnesota farmer on there, that's, that'd be great, so.
Okay, um, just briefly, I had, uh, be on the Yellow Ribbon Meeting last week, uh, just discussed various projects that they're working on, a lot of positive things for veterans that they deal with on a weekly basis, uh, had the Northwest Regional Radio Board Meeting in Thief River, and, uh, I think I mentioned that the last meeting we had, we're still working on transitioning to, uh, splitting our administrative duties, uh, with the organization we use out of Bemidji, with, and the technical duties, which we're looking for somebody now to take over, so that was our main discussion there, uh, had the Greater Fargo and EDC meeting, Executive Committee Meeting last week, uh, updates from the staff there, um, nothing really new, just a lot of, lot of various projects that they're working on, and, uh, yesterday, I had, uh, Land of the Dancing Sky, the Area Agency on Aging in Menomen, and I was installed as the Board Chair for this year, so, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so, lots of good news, so.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, be careful what you wish for. That was it for me for the week, so, Dave, come on up. You brought backup with you today, Dave, so.
I did, you know, this is for Brian, so I better have a little backup in case there's a question I'm going to answer. Um, this is Brian Friedrich, I think everybody knows Brian's been with us for a year and a half now, and doing a fabulous job.
Good morning.
I have a number one, uh, we would like to replace, uh, two of our four mowing tractors, um, one of them is a two thousand and five, they're, they're both Ag co-challengers, uh, the other one is a two thousand and seven, uh, we don't always replace according to our Internal Service Fund schedule, but we like to stay close to it, uh, if it makes sense, you know, if it doesn't make sense, we like to, you know, keep it a little bit longer, usually makes a little, you know, it saves a little bit of money and sort of replacing when they're not completely ready to go, uh, we feel both these ones are ready, uh, I think we've got an eight-year schedule for the tractors, so, uh, one of them is right on schedule, the other one's a couple of years earlier, they both got over three thousand dollars, and we have pretty decent trades on them, uh, what we do is we take a look at the Minnesota State bid, uh, Brian looked at replacing with the same model versus the John Deere model, and I think you also looked at one other option, but it wasn't on the state bid, is that correct?
Yeah.
You know, we looked at a third option that was not available, so, um, it's nice to, to utilize that state bid if we can, it saves us a little bit of money on advertising, and it's, it's an easier purchase, and you can actually, uh, build your tractor the way you like, is that correct, kind of a, you pick different options that are all listed on there, so you, you don't just get what they bid, so to speak, you know, you can kind of choose your option, and, uh, these ones in particular have the transmission, uh, maybe you want to talk about a little bit, but it, it'll help us in the fall as far as speed, as far as lack of getting stuck.
Yeah, they have a, the manufacturer's call, different things, it's infinitely variable or constantly or continuously variable, um, what it is, is you don't actually have just your twenty-four gears of a standard tractor, this one basically is zero to whatever with one lever, and, uh, the, the two challengers that we have presently have that, we have two John Deeres that are standard shift, and, uh, the operators are finding that the variable transmissions help them to get out of the bottom of the ditch and, and not get stuck as easily because they don't have to stop to shift, you know, so it's, it does seem to help, plus the resale on them is quite a bit better.
On the challengers versus the-
The variable transmission as opposed to a, you know, a standard shift transmission.
How about the Tracking Committee, you have, you guys have looked at that?
We have, we have reviewed this, and, uh, we support, um, the Highway Department's, um, recommendation.
Do you typically do, you do all the maintenance, correct, and, but is there a certain that is easier to work on, a certain brand, that, or, I mean, what is your fleet right now? Is it a mix of the Challenger and the John Deere?
Correct, yeah, yeah, we have two, two yellow ones and two green ones, uh, the biggest thing maybe might be parts and service, you know, luckily for our region, our area, and I talked to other counties that are further north of us, we're so lucky with track, uh, with like Tannenmaxwell trucks too, we've got everything right here, so, a lot of times they have to buy according to what's close to them for parts and service, but, uh, I would say both of these models are probably similar in that respect, uh, you know, you take a look at, at bottom line pricing, you know, what's it cost, and that's the biggest factor, the other factor would be, um, how, how it runs, and if it's, you know, if it's a, if it's a good piece of equipment, if you had one that doesn't run as well and you've had issues with them, then you kind of look away from that.
Is this first bid for the Clay County side? Is it Clay County business?
Correct, yep, yep, we, and luckily there again, I mean, that John Deere dealership is right out our back door, so that makes it, uh, you know, we, we don't give that a whole lot of weight, but it is very convenient for, you know, if you have something that you can just limp over there, or if you have an issue, you can call a guy, and he'll just, he'll jump in one of their little gators, and he'll buzz on over and take a look at things, so, but, yeah, this would be the RDO and-
I guess, depending on the board's wishes, I would prefer that we give messages to a Clay County business.
I would make a motion that we approve the John Deeres. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same say, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be pretty exciting, are we, um, come to a break?
Hmm?
Are we going to break?
Do we, do we want to take a break, or?
At all.
Huh?
Like for two minutes.
Okay, take a two-minute break, so. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, um-
Laurie, was that written, yeah?
No.
Two thousand, two thousand and fourteen, uh, year-end revenue expenditure report, Laurie Johnson and Brian Burr. Morning, Laurie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, Brian's getting ready. Can you explain to me a little bit on the bills, why there's so many different sections on, on the old?
We have different, so many different sheets here.
Yeah.
Because we've got one set for the general revenue fund and road and bridge and all those sorts of bills. And then we've got the administrative bills for social services. And then we've got all the contract and aid payments. So we've got all of those different ones. And we always have the administrative side for social services and general revenue. And then just once a month, we have the other ones added in there too, the other social service ones.
So it's based on, they're paid for on different funds?
Right.
So you divide them up, so they're?
Correct. And they actually come out of different systems. The social service payments come out of different, it's a state system that flows into our financial system. So they actually are working in a totally different area.
Thank you. Okay, Brian.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Lori and I are gonna give you a little update on 2014 year-end dollars. As you're, I think you're aware, we are in a modified accrual system. And so they've been, you know, plugging in the revenues as they come in. And of course, also paying the end of the year bills. And this is close, but it's not exact yet. There may be some modifications yet because there will be some applications and things. But we promised you an update on this as soon as we could get close to being at it for the year. And I think we're there, but just be prepared if they're, if the figures change a little bit or they don't exactly match up. Even the two pieces of paper that I handed out to you, one is dated, the, this sheet is dated March 9th, which was last week when Lori printed that out. And then the updated fund balances was, she gave me an updated one yesterday. So they might even vary just a little bit. But maybe before we go into the fund balances, if we could just take maybe five minutes and go over the, the, the single sheet, it's front and back. And it's kind of a line-by-line items of each individual department and where they're, they're at percentage-wise. I do have, of course, the, the big document that does break it down to, you know, what they spend on cleaning supplies and office supplies and different things as well. But I personally haven't taken the time yet to go through line by line. Last night, I was going over this one sheet that's department-wise and to find out where they're at. But anyway, we'll get going on under general revenue. And that will correspond to your first column of your, your larger sheet on the fund balances. But as you can see, board of commissioners, and I'll try to go through the slow to get started with. What you see there, there's only four entries on that line and it says what you were budgeted. We budgeted $283,739 for the board of commissioners last year in 2014. You expended $277,614 of that, which left $6,000 in, in, in the, in the fund. So you expended 98% of your budget, which is very, very good. I mean, it's very close. If you, we want you to be around that 100% because that shows accurate budgeting. So that's, I'm just, I'm just being that specific on that. So you get the, kind of the flow here. Court administration, they went slightly over at 104%. County public defenders, and if, if there's a big, a larger variance, I'll, we'll spend a little bit of time maybe on explanation. It's very hard to make a judgment. What we have to do is basic on, on past experiences. And we did increase that now for 2015 because they did expend 104,000. We'd only budgeted 80,000 on that. Unfortunately, we don't control that expenditure. The court does when they assign a public defender to a, to a case. So law library, 97%. County administrator, if you'll see there, 107% that we expended at 16,400 that we didn't budget for. There's a reason for that. We did move an employee from the county administrator's budget last year. I talked about that during the year, to personnel. And you'll see in personnel, they fell, they had $21,000 left over in their budget. We went over by 16,000. But it's because that, that employee didn't get moved in the translation of it, the expenditures till about two-thirds of the year is over with. So that, that won't show up next year. But we didn't make the change on that.
Yeah, we planned on it, but we got a new payroll system. We've been having a little bit of difficulty getting the details of when the salary was paid to each individual department. So.
But is that, is that an entry you could still correct?
Yeah, we're still good, we're still planning on doing that. We're just in the process of having them update that general ledger interface. We're still working on that.
But the county administrator will be around 98%age, the same as the commissioners. And the same with personnel. That'll come up to about that 97, 98% range. So just to explain that. And then we'll just kind of move on. If you'll notice, the auditor revenue was up there, 24,000. Expenditures were 95,000 less than what they had budgeted for, which is a real net effect of over $100,000. Motor vehicle, motor vehicle exceeded their expenditures just slightly. But if you noticed, their revenues were up $59,000. So it far exceeds the additional expenditures that they, they paid on personnel. And that's where it mostly was. And that's been a trend with them. They've really done well on their revenue.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, is that wheelage tax, is that in that? That's not in the motor vehicle?
No, that's not in there. That's in the road and bridge fund.
Perfect.
And that's a fee that goes to the state. These are just the $10 fee or something. This is their revenue on each transaction that counts.
Does this, didn't, didn't we last year at mid-year give, authorize another personnel for there too?
Yes. Yes, we do have an additional.
So part of that is in this as well, right? But, but that wasn't for a full year, was it?
We started mid-year.
Mid-year?
Mid-year, about, for one day a week, yeah.
So the revenues were up, but then the expenses for last year were only up on the new person for?
For half.
Half a year.
Right.
So some of that difference will be reduced in 2015, correct?
Yes, because that would be a full year, correct.
Unless, unless the revenues continue to rise.
That's correct.
Which they could do.
That should, could do, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe I should mention internal county. I kind of skipped over it, but that's the audit, right?
Correct.
And someone had asked me not too long ago, what we pay for auditing a year. And I thought I said it was around $70,000 that we pay.
Well, that's just the general fund portion. It does get divided up between other funds as well. The majority of it is, is paid for out of here.
Okay, 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 great. And then we'll see treasure. Treasure certainly stayed within their expenditure budget. But you'll see the revenue side increased $342,000, which is a lot of money. And Lori and I have discussed that, but since that falls under Lori's, she can.
Yeah, we had to defer some interest revenue from the year before. If we don't receive the revenue, we're not allowed to recognize it. And since they didn't pay us any of that money out, we weren't allowed to recognize it. So this year in 2014, I had them pay that money to us so then we could recognize. And it was $130,000, $137,000 that we were recognizing from the year before.
And you can't show that as a receivable slash income type?
No, no.
Okay.
Assessor's office, you can see is right on, right on target at 100%. Personnel, I already explained that, that one that goes along with it. Technology service is right on the mark as well. Same with information services. Technology service, and I'll follow up on that. It looks like they're short of their expected revenues, about $9,400. And they are now selling services to other counties. And it may be that they did not collect some money or something. But like I said, I'll follow up on that. Now, elections, looks like it overspent quite a bit. But if you remember right, we budget so much a year for elections. One year you spend it, the next year you don't.
Next year it'll gain.
That's exactly right. Yep.
But that falls on target for what you budget.
Correct. Yes.
Following.
We, we budget around $100,000 a little bit over every year. So it's an even budget.
Perfect.
We keep that number the same and then we go backwards one year and then we get it back the next.
And county attorney's office, you see that, I mean, that's a pretty big budget. They, they didn't spend all of what they had budgeted. Plus, their revenue was up a little bit. But then you'll see as you go down into some of their other smaller programs that their revenues weren't quite high. And victim witness advocate is down 29,000. And I'll talk with Brian about that to find out why. I don't have those reasons for you today. Recorder's office, you'll see that there's $113,874 that they were under budget. But if you go to the left column, they were down on the revenues of $72,000. And the recorder, Diane, came in this year and, and did not ask for a position to be filled because their income levels are down. So not only did they meet their budget very nicely, but they have now reduced their expenditures of one person because of it. So that's, that's very good management on her part. Surveyor, remember a few years ago, they ran a little bit over. You can see they're right on target this year. So I think they should be complimented for staying there. Grounds and buildings, they exceeded their budget. But if you remember right, we went through some changeovers and we had some payouts on, on the supervisor leaving and some other things. And then I'll talk about it on the back page too. But they probably, I think they paid for some things out of their general line by the budget that they normally would pay out of, and it's called county building. And we only spent about $45,000 of the $100,000 back there. And I think that got credited to their account. So that would speak for quite a bit of.
Where would they get their revenue from?
General fund.
I mean.
Or like a little few dollars?
Grounds and buildings or where are they?
They get a reimbursement from the city of Morehead for, for a small portion of that.
Okay.
For the law enforcement center.
I guess that is in the small portion, it was $1,200 less. But yeah, it's $100,000 that they collect in revenue.
Yeah, that whole portion isn't, isn't a reimbursement.
No, no. Veterans affairs, you'll see ran a little bit over, but you'll see that a grant came in of about $14,000 too. So that, they were very, very close on that. And I know this is probably more detailed than what you want, but I think it's good to go through it line by line for, for lots of reasons, just to update on this. Planning and zoning, the expenditures stayed well, 96%. Revenues were up just slightly, $725,000. That's, that's a little bit of humor.
Yeah.
And that is a flood buyout, buyout money. You expended that when you bought those homes to the south and to the north. And the state reimbursed us for that. That was a pay and then be reimbursed. So where you probably lost revenue and your fund balances the prior years, you're replenishing those now with $725,000 that came in for 2014. So that's good news for us.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Environmental services is falling within, they, they work off of their fees. And I'll check into that a little bit. They're 107% of, of the budget and down a little bit on their revenues. So I need to, I need to ask some questions in regards to that. The sheriff's office, another one that is a large budget. As you'll see, they budgeted expenditures of $3.7 million. They spent $44,000 more than what they budgeted for. But you'll see their revenues for their permits and different things were up $57,000. So for almost a $4 million budget, they came in within 13 or about, let's see, what are we about? Yeah, six and seven, about $13,000 to the good on that. That's, that's really complimentary on that huge of a budget. They really do a good job over there in watching what they can watch. As you'll see, the others are, the narcotic, narcotic task force was up just a little bit on their expenditures, down a little bit on their revenues. Medical examiner, they did expand a little more fees. And the medical examiners, when there's an unintended death in the county, they are required by law to do an autopsy on it. And they take their best guess on what, how many autopsies there's going to be. And we ran over a little bit this year, unfortunately. Corrections, I know the costs are going up, but you, you budgeted satisfactorily in 2014. If you remember right, you added a person to help coordinate things. You added a lot of money to the medical issues. They did some modification. They did a contracting with Crookston for a contracted fee, which they expected both medical fees to, expenses to be lowered and out of home placement, or out of home boarding to be down because of their contract. And they were successful in doing so. They spent $240,000 less than what they had budgeted for. And they collected $41,000 more than what they had planned to.
How did they collect that much more? What was?
I'd like to say boarding, I mean, the, the booking fees.
Oh, okay.
So.
It wouldn't be boarding.
No, it wouldn't be boarding. But they do charge for booking. I don't know, duly be able to answer that better than I.
Okay, that's fine.
But I do know they charge a booking fee.
That's right.
Dispatch, pretty much right on. Juvenile detention, pretty much right on. Preparation. Emergency management, you'll see for a smaller budget, expended $42,900 more than what they budgeted for. But the grant, there, if you go to the revenue side, there were $71,000 increase in revenue. And if you remember right, Brian Green, Lieutenant Green came to the board for approval to receive that money and also to expend that money. Others are pretty much right on target. You'll notice soil and water. They, there's pass-through funds that they get that are granted. And you'll see over on the revenue side that they did not receive, at least in that time period of $40,000. So they didn't get that passed through to them. So that's an even wash as well, if, if you look at that and wonder why. And the others are some internal postings that Lori does. If you have any questions, I know she'll certainly answer those.
Brian, that home monitoring, we're done with that now, right?
We are.
Yeah.
Yes, we are. As of April 1st, I think we are done with it. On the back, you'll notice now, this was a bonding year. So when you look at the, even on the, the other long sheet that you have, and you look at fund balances, road and bridge with the bonding money, it's, it's gonna be distorted. But if you want to just look at what highway maintenance was budgeted for and what they spent last year, they, they did really, really well. And that's what you kind of expected with some nicer weather. And they also didn't buy some gravel and things because their stockpiles were pretty good as well. Highway construction, of course, spent much more than what they had budgeted before in relationship to, well, I guess even half a million dollars when we talked about construction.
But isn't, isn't that a lot about when the money comes in too?
It's the money that's coming in. And it's also the bonding that we did.
Right.
Yep.
So.
On the revenue side, it's significant.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So you brought a total road and bridge. I mean, it, it's the construction that drew that quite a bit. Social services, Rhonda deals with a huge budget there. As you'll see, that income maintenance. And, and we'll talk about that with the fund balances too. And she's here, so she can certainly talk about that. But if you remember right, she spoke up early on last year and said that there was 600 and some thousands that weren't going to be collected and applied to the 2013 revenue. Well, that did come in in 2014. And that speaks for a good chunk of, of the, of the increase that she is up in fund balances. And I think that's probably partially for that income maintenance, that 585,000 speaks to that as well. But if, you go to the total social service budget, you'll see that there was 107,000 that they didn't expend out of their approved budget of seven, more than $17 million. And you want to talk about being right on target, that's within 1% of what they approved to spend. And the revenue was certainly up about a half million dollars. And I, and that was because of that collection that we already talked about.
Was all of that, that collection?
Well, 600,000 approximately.
600,000.
Yeah. And, and some of the others, I talked about that when, when I talked to Joe on the other side, that county building. We budgeted funds there for, for improvements to buildings and different things that probably got charged to, I don't know that Joe's budget, but we expended only $45,000 of that. Then we get into some of those other funds, those capital building funds that we talk about. The juvenile detention, we talked about that on the front side. They're really right on with, with the fees that are charged. And I guess Steve was here, but he's given updates too. Just for you people that probably have heard it, but sometimes it takes a while to understand, that we have a 24-bed secure unit there that is a member of that 10-county consortium. And what is the fee? $190 per bed? Or $190,000 per bed, I think we pay for that each year. And each county has, they buy a certain number of beds. And then you'll see non-secure. The non-secure is all county dollars. That's all Clay County dollars. The others is, is almost a enterprise-type operation.
It is an enterprise.
It is an enterprise, okay. And then goes into the debt retirement. And we've talked about that a little bit. Public health had a really good year. And you'll see in the, in the. And you'll see in the, in the, uh, fund balance statements too, that you'll see there's a lot more revenue that was collected there, um, this year. And they went to a time study that speaks to about, uh, four, five hundred.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand dollars because of a time study and more collections.
That's new revenue that's coming in that wasn't budgeted. And so, that's why they're ending up with much more revenue than they anticipated.
So, okay, so they had, they had more billable time that they were.
Right. And so, that'll be budgeted in the future. But it was something new that when we did our budgets, that wasn't.
The revenue, the revenue wasn't budgeted.
Right.
And solid waste, I, I won't really go through that. That is an enterprise fund. The, there's two, two basic incomes there, and that is the tipping fee at the landfill. You guys probably talked about that when you were out on your tour. Uh, what they collect when somebody comes out to dump garbage.
Tour.
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 There you go. When you, when you went out there to look at it.
Yeah.
And then also, there is a fee assessment. There is a fee assessment that, that, uh, that goes on the tax statement. And that's about a million dollars a year roughly.
They are gonna look at charging different out there now. Yeah, they're gonna weigh instead of, I think it's gonna be a six-month turnover, something like that, where they're gonna compare it to see.
Yeah.
The guesstimate and also the actual.
Yep, yep.
Well, you know, I, although this is an enterprise fund, I, it's, it's something that, that, with, with all of these plans and things we have got going forward, um, I would certainly like to see, um, see us sit down with, uh, Grant is on that committee now, you and I, and Lori and Brian, and, and get Kirk and, and to really, um, you know, sh- sh- some of the revenue, things are gonna change, the way we, uh, scale things now, for example, and these types of things. And, and the potential for change in tipping fees. I think it's gonna be important for us to really get a handle on.
Right.
On this moving forward so that we ultimately know what we have that we could invest into a new facility as well, so.
Right.
Uh, that, that's gonna take some, just take some digging into and, and understanding.
Yeah, and, and even though we call it an enterprise fund, I shouldn't say call it, it is an enterprise.
It's an enterprise fund, yes.
But there's also a fee, a special assessment that goes on the tax base, considering excess of one million dollars. So, it is a taxing entity as well that goes into there.
Oh, yeah, very close question.
So, family service center, pretty much right on the mark for the expenditures. We will continue to strive for that to be a self-sustaining, uh, building as well. And we, the elevator's gonna, we're gonna have to try and figure out how that works out. But, uh, that's gonna be a big chunk of money. Uh, it was right around three hundred thousand dollars, if I remember right, the, the bid was. So, we'll get that worked out.
So, the total family service center, we received a hundred and eighty thousand, almost one eighty-one more in revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And we spent thirteen thousand less than anticipated.
That is correct.
I think, I think this has gotta mark just one of the few years, uh, where, where this thing is operated in the black.
Well, part of that was a, was a transfer from the revenue fund.
Okay, so then.
And it wasn't because of revenues and expenditures, it was because of a cash shortage. And we bought seventy-five thousand dollars of postage on December thirty-first, and so we ended up going.
But I think, I think Lori, would you agree that compared to years ago?
Oh, absolutely.
When we were massively subsidizing the family service center, uh, on an annual basis, I think there's been major progress made in making that, that thing become kind of a self-sufficient through its tenants.
Right, and now the debt is paid off, so that'll be a big help.
Yeah.
Cash-wise, I think.
Yeah. So, that's, and I, and I think, you know, uh, credit should go to Georgia too for a lot of that stuff and what she's done over there. So, I just wanted to raise that point. Okay.
And those others are debt services and then your internal service fund. Um, we spent more money than we did collect last year, uh, in regards to internal service fund. But I think we do show internal service fund of, uh, of an increase in its balance as well.
Well.
Can explain that a little bit.
Well, because when you buy an asset, you pay them a little, but it's, it's part of the.
Credit for the asset.
Right.
Okay.
But so, cash is down.
Right.
Cash is down.
Is, is there any figures just brought up at the meeting last Saturday as far as our general reserve? How much we keep in there? I mean, compared to like two thousand ten, where are we at now? I mean, did we keep thirty percent in two thousand ten? Do we keep forty percent now? Or where are we at on general reserve fund? Do we keep so much money in a reserve fund there? Is any figure that we have there?
We do. We, we've been continually increasing for the most part. Our, our reserve has been getting bigger every year.
Are there, is there a state requirement to have so much in there too?
They want us to have approximately fifty percent.
Okay.
Because we don't get any tax money in until May. So, five-twelfths is what they like us to have for our reserve because, because we don't get any cash until middle of the year.
And we are at where? Or where are we at?
We're not quite there, but we're getting close. But if you include the internal service fund balance, then we're, we're there.
Okay, very good. It all looks good overall, so.
Yeah, I understand that was asked at Saturday's meeting and, and, uh, yeah, the, and I know some commissioners have maybe a, a different opinion as to what the state auditors. They say, say thirty-five to fifty percent is what they guide on, they want. And then it depends upon, as Lori said, what do you wanna consider as your cash? That internal service fund, we have cash available. So, we are in a comfort zone is, is where we're at. But remember, our budget goes up every year. I mean, we were about sixty-three million dollars. So, it takes a lot of reserves to cover those first five months of payments when you're not collecting any taxes. So.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, yes, that is, that is being directed. And I, and I know in talking with Nancy, she said that it asked them from the Farmers Group data question about the reserve.
Thank you.
So, now if we can go to this sheet, this is fairly simple as well, uh, but I think it's very, very important. If you'll see up on top, the in blue is the different funds that Lori tracks. The different accounts, I should say. And we talked about the general, and it says up there in blue, general. And if you just kinda wanna follow that down the column of it, the total revenue, we collected twenty-one million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars in reference to what she assigned to the general account. And then the expenditures, she's listing those as well. And then she says that the total expenditures were twenty million, one hundred and three thousand, uh, seven oh five for the year. So, that had a net effect of more revenue collected than expenditures of one point three six five million dollars. So, you just talked about that fund balance, Commissioner Gross. Uh, last year, the fund balance was eight million, eighty-nine thousand. And now, as of right now, it may adjust a little bit. But our fund balance is nine million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand in that general fund account. But there's several accounts, so. And that's kinda true. Road and bridge, I'd like to say we spent one point seven million dollars more than what we took in, but that's not necessarily true because there's advancements on it. And, and that's a little tricky to say that that's the exact. But the others are pretty much that way. You'll see social services, revenue of eighteen million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand. Expenditures of seventeen million, one fifty-five. And that was a net effect of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Lori talked about the six hundred or six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Rhonda talked about it last year, that it was gonna come in after the year. That speaks to a great deal of that excess. Another factor that is thrown in there that I think is pretty darned important is the, um, detox center. Was there about a hundred and?
Hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that you budgeted for the detox center, but you didn't have to expend last year because of the revenue sources that, and the changes that have taken place. That gets credited to social services because social services is the one that budgets for the detox center out of county dollars. So, that takes up, those two items take up a great deal of, of that, uh, excess that's in there. Nonetheless, it's excess. Right? That they will probably be using, so. Anyway, then you've got the building fund, uh, increase there. We budget fifty thousand, I think it is each year. And there, there's a little bit of excess in there. Public health, uh, we talked about that time study. But there, you can see the revenue up top, five point six million dollars. The expenditures are five point one and the excess of, of, uh, four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So, their fund balance went up pretty nicely this last year as well. Solid waste, solid waste is not just cash. That is also assets mixed in with that. About half of that is assets of eleven million, of eleven million dollars is assets. Uh, the same with the family service. They don't have three point four million dollars of cash in there. And juvenile detention is the same way, or is that all cash?
They, no, they have some assets as well.
Okay, they have some assets as well. Internal service fund, uh, Lori spoke to that earlier. Uh, debt service, uh, that we collect and then we make those payments at different times of the year. But that, I think you have to collect like a hundred and five percent for a payment. So, there's a little bit of building there. And so, you'll see a fund balance down there, fifty million dollars. That is not all cash by any means. There's some assets mixed into there. Uh, I don't know, I guess you could extract and find out exactly the dollars of that, but there's probably thirty million in there or something like that.
It's possible, I guess.
But that's of all funds, and those are obligated to other areas too. So, it's not like we have thirty million dollars because we have to pay for payroll and everything that goes along.
Eighteen million in cash, approximately.
Eighteen million in cash, okay.
Where, where's the jail fund under it? Where's the jail? I mean, we're putting fifty thousand in there?
We're just gonna, we're just reserving part of the fund balance for that right now. We haven't set up a specific fund for that yet.
Okay, there's no fund for that yet, okay.
Questions or, um?
What you had overall, Lane?
Lori, how much does Clay County have in reserves, liquid money that can be extended if some sort of emergency does arise? That's not dedicated to anything else?
Well, we have, we have eighteen million dollars of cash and investments. So, that's, some of that's more liquid than others.
All right, but that money is available in case, uh?
Right, I would, I would say probably more like, that's actual cash. We probably have about six million.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First lady.
Rhonda, come on out.
Yes.
Good morning. Next on our agenda, staffing, social service.
All right. I have, uh, Pat Boyer with me today, our adult services supervisor, and Stacy Christensen, our child protection supervisor. So, they're gonna help me, um, talk a little bit about this topic. I did send some information out in your board packet. And so, bottom line to this presentation today is we are struggling with, um, workload and staffing patterns in our child protection unit as well as in our adult protection unit. So, if you just flip the document way to the back, I'm just gonna put out there what we're requesting. And then we'll flip back and talk about kinda the data behind the request. So, on the back page of your document, um, all the way to the back, we're requesting today approval to add new positions, three social work positions. Two point five of those positions, we would put directly in our child protection area to work with the assessment side of, of that workload. And then a point five social work position to work in adult protection, which would be in Pat's unit. Looking at the twenty fifteen budget, of course, we're, you know, not in a budget process. And these positions were not, um, uh, considered in the twenty fifteen budget. So, because we're early enough in the year, I would, um, propose making some budget adjustments, which, which I would do, um, throughout the year in the twenty fifteen budget. And would anticipate needing, um, possibly some fund balance to make it work for this year. And then when we do the budget in the summer, May and June, I would figure these all in and work them into the budget for twenty sixteen. So, that is the, um, request. So, we'll go back to the front of the document and just talk a little bit about what we're concerned about. Oh, okay. So, um, first we'll start with child protection. Um, that program, one of the things that we talked about with the personnel issues committee is that this is one of our most heavily mandated service areas, but one of the areas that receives the least funding. Uh, the staff in this area that we're talking about that handles the child protection investigations, we have about five staff that manage this workload. And their ability to earn revenue based on their work is more limited in some of our other program areas, although they can earn some, but it's much more limited. One of the things we talked about last week is, um, governor, the governor's task force on the protection of children. That's getting a lot of traction this year because of some tragic situations that have happened in our state. There's been a task force that has been, um, looking at issues in child protection. And that actually has passed both the House and Senate, and it's sitting on the governor's desk for signature. And the, the details of that legislation are going to increase the workload that we're already dealing with. So, um, we're, and we don't necessarily disagree with some of those recommendations. We think they're good recommendations, but they will, um, add workload to that area because we'll be able to look at different factors when we get reports and screening decisions and that kinda stuff. So, our concern is not only for what, the workload that we have now, but what we will see, uh, probably come July when these, um, this new legislation passes. What I also understand is that Governor Dayton initially didn't have money in his budget for counties to implement these recommendations. But my understanding is his supplemental budget, which is supposed to be out this week, is including five million dollars to, uh, or fifty million dollars, I'm sorry, fifty million dollars to, um, help counties implement the, um, legislation that comes from the task force. So, we're hopeful, although, you know, I've submitted a plan that would in, include reorganizing the budget a little bit and maybe using some fund balance, perhaps that may not be necessary if, um, that fifty million, we start to see that, um, those dollars come to the counties to help implement the recommendations. But I'm going with worst-case scenario because right now, we really feel an urgency to address this issue. Last week, I was here and requested replacement of a social worker. That social worker was directly in the work that we're talking about. And the basis for that resignation was, um, the workload, the, the expectations of the workload, the, the types of, um, expectations that, and the intakes that are coming in, and that's our concern. This is a unit that has had the most turnover. And we have the most, um, our staff is the newest. Of the five that we have, four of them are, um, two years or less. And two of them, well, actually, two were within their six months. So, it's just, uh, it's, again, it's a, a workforce issue that we have to figure out in terms of keeping longevity and experience in that program area. So, I kinda jumped around, but, and we don't need to go in detail, but that first page really lays out the work of Stacy's unit and the mandates that we have. So, that unit investigates all the reports that come to our agency where there is an allegation of child maltreatment. So, that might be physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, um, those kinds of things.
On the left-hand column there, conduct child welfare, you have number four down, sexualized behaviors.
Mm-hmm.
Sexualized. Could you define that, please?
Yeah, and maybe Stacy, you can talk about some of those.
A word I haven't heard before.
Typically, it involves, um, sexual behavior between siblings. Um, in the statute, if a child is age ten or older, they can be looked at as an offender. And then that becomes a child protection matter. Normally, have siblings under that age ten, say nine and six years old. Then what we like to do is walk and engage the family, talk about the education piece, supervision plans.
Thank you.
So, that page just kinda outline, outlines all the mandates and the different levels of intervention that those staff provide in that unit. Um, if we flip over to the, um, bar graphs, the first bar graph on the left there talks about the number of child protection and child welfare intakes that have come into our agency from two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen. Um, so you'll have the numbers. So, you'll see from eighteen seventy-eight to two thousand fifty-five in twenty fourteen. And then the, um, subsequent bar graph labeled child protection intake. So, of, of those total intakes, we separated out how many were child protection and how many were child welfare. The significant, um, piece to that is that although the child welfare ones, uh, saw a decrease from two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen, th- those middle years there, they're staying pretty stable. But the child protection, the level, the, the reports that we're getting that rise to the level of child protection has increased twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent. to the level of Child Protection has increased twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent, which really reflects what we've been concerned about is the fact that we're seeing some pretty serious reports coming into our agency, some families that are struggling with multiple issues and significant issues, so that intensity and that involvement by our office is increased. So that's what those other bar graphs represent. The other pieces of data that were important to talk about i- is the Child Protection Assessments, and that's the area that is causing us most concern. The numbers that were screened in requiring that intense level of investigation. So those have increased ninety-two and a half percent from 2011 to 2014. And, and this is really what we're seeing our staff struggling with and the worries that they're having in terms of meeting that demand and the level of, with these investigations or statutory language about when we respond, how we respond, what kind of documentation, what our response role is. So it's pretty heavily mandated. The last piece to highlight is our out-of-home placements have increased from 2011 to 2014. We're seeing that trend continue already into 2015, the out-of-home placements, and I know Steve talked about that this morning with the Shelter Care Facility and, and what he's hearing around the state. We are certainly seeing that in our office as well.
Are you seeing all these things then for, pretty much into the first quarter now of the year, are they all still going up or staying high?
Yes, when we look at the first two to three, two months of our data, what we'd be looking at if we continued at the same pace is about five hundred assessments.
Oh, okay.
And we're at, was it three sixty, three sixty in 2014? So, and I did on the following page where it says summary, the last two months of data, I did put that in there so you could see of all four of those areas what the first two months looks like as compared to two months the same time period last year. And in all of those areas, i- is an increase except for the Child Welfare. Again, which kind of is consistent with the fact that what we're seeing is more significant.
Well, you're already seeing it going up for 2015, but if the Governor's mandates go into place, that will even increase it probably dramatically more, I would assume, so.
Right, this does not, the, these numbers and this trend does not reflect what the Governor's Task Force will, how that will impact, so absolutely. And I did, on the following page then, indicate the, the Task Force recommendations, and as this is making its way through the legislature, there are additional recommendations that are being made. But the House File eight that we spoke about when Senator Ekin was here, he's an author on that bill, that's the one that's sitting on the Governor's Desk for signature, and that involves a number of these pieces in the, in the recommendations. So again, all of these recommendations are gonna make an impact on, on what we're seeing. Our staff are, you know, I talked about our staffing concerns, and, and our staff are really concerned about their ability to provide the level of intervention that they feel they need to for these families, and to get out there and see the families and have that face-to-face contact at the level that they need. And that's certainly something we have to, to pay attention to. The other piece that, you know, aside from just making sure that we're following mandates and seeing the families and assessing appropriately for safety, the staff are not able to get to some of the paperwork that we need to make sure is completed. And some of that does translate into revenue, particularly for kids that go into placement. I'm concerned that we're missing some revenue based on the fact that we're missing some timelines, we're missing some of that documentation in our system. So my hope is with, with this as well, that we'll be able to look at that increased revenue. And I did plan for that for this year in terms of trying to figure out how to pay for the positions that we're requesting. So that is the Child Protection side of things, and then the Adult Protection side of things is, is another concern. And we can, can I go right to the, the grid there, the bar graph, Adult Protection? You'll see the, in the Adult Protection Area, we ha, again, all those reports come into the agency, they're screened, we have one FTE assigned, and we do have another FTE that's been taking some overflow or covering for her when she's gone. The concern is, you will see here, is the increase as well since 2011. And, and I think even in yesterday's paper, we talk about our population growing older, we talk about some of the efforts in our county that we've been making for the Elder Abuse Committees that we've been working on. It's become more, people are more aware of it, and we're seeing some increased reporting, which is a good thing. We, we want those reports to be made if in fact those are concerns out there. So you'll see from three hundred and ninety-seven intakes in 2011 to five sixty-six in 2014, and then you'll see the increase in the numbers of those reports that have required an investigation by our staff. And again, it's become a challenge to meet that mandate and to get out there and do a good job at those investigations. In, at the Adult Protection Area as well, in July of 2015, the state is looking at implementing a statewide, what they call common entry point, so all of the calls will come into a statewide system. And with that, the state has told the counties you should plan on some increased reports. And on that slide, we bullet out what DHS is telling us to plan for because they think that in, in other states where they've gone to a centralized statewide system, those states have seen increased reporting, increased investigations, increased referrals to the counties, and we think we're gonna see that as well, again, separate from the trend we're already seeing. So that is a concerning area as well. So I don't know, Pat or Stacy, if you have things to add with all of this, or if you have questions for us.
Yeah, well, I was, you know, we talked about this at the PIC committee, the Personnel Issues Meeting last week, and I brought it up, but it's unfortunate, but it's a reality that I think, you know, this is an area that seems to be growing dramatically, and unfortunately we need more staff to deal with it. And with what's going on at the state level, I don't think there's any question, you're gonna have more, more work to do in this area, so I, I think we supported it at the PIC meeting last week, increasing the staff for social services.
Mr. Chair. Wayne? Rhonda, on the bottom line here, you say after the legislative session, you will be coming back also looking for another point five increase, but not at this time, right?
Right, we, we actually.
Yes or no?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the positions as requested by Rhonda on the back page here.
I have a motion. Do we have? We have a motion and a second discussion. Rhonda, I wanna, I think at least in terms of the cost, I know you're at least hopeful that we will get some funding to help with these positions from the state, is that correct?
Yes, I, you know, I'm optimistic, I just cannot see that they would pass these recommendations without providing some resources to the counties. However, you know, there's never guaranteed, but I'm optimistic.
It's not guaranteed, but ma- maybe, you know, we may be ahead of the curve too if we get these positions rolling, so.
Right.
You're in a position to apply for that money as soon as it has become available?
Right, and I don't think it'll be a grant, it'll be an appropriation or some sort of formula-based distribution would be my guess, but it's, it's not clear.
Okay. Aren't these, aren't these workers eligible for time reimbursement?
Well, again, this is the area that receives the least amount of funding from the state. So where we would see hopefully some increase in revenue would be in our out-of-home placements for capturing what's called four E, which is federal revenue. That's the area where I'm concerned that some of our paperwork is, is not getting completed timely enough, and my concern is that we may be missing out on some of that revenue. And that's, that's more small. The other is that if we can respond to these cases sooner and get them into a case management work group sooner, then we can claim on the case management side. The assessment side, we're not able to claim as we are on case management services, so.
Then in your, in your comments to us, in terms of how you'd go about this in the 2015 budget, because the budget's already been done, that you would be looking within your budget to possibly make some changes that could help offset some of these costs? I'm, that's what I got out of what you said.
Yes, yes.
And then in addition, then, that if you couldn't find it all, that we would probably have to look at the reserves.
Correct.
For 2015.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said there correctly.
Mr. Chair, Kevin, was that clear in your PIC committee?
Yeah, yeah, I thi- I think it was, yeah. Jenny?
You know, I don't, I don't have a problem requesting your, you know, these positions. I, my biggest concern, I guess, is, is the turnover, and, and is adding these extra positions gonna help with the turnover? I realize they're horrific cases, and, and it's very difficult what you do, and we thank you for what you do, but that's my concern on, on, from this side is, you know, why are we seeing the turnover that we are?
I, and I'm glad you raised that, I raised that exact same issue in our PIC committee meeting, 'cause it, to me, that has red flags all over it. When you have five or six or seven employees in a department, and the oldest one in there is maybe two to two and a half years of, of work, so to me, that's saying something isn't right. And so I, I still think that you need to do some internal looking there as to what is that, is, is indeed the type of work? It, is it a salary structure thing? Are these people moving on because they don't think they're paid enough to do the type of work that they have to do in that regard? There can be a number of factors that can lead to why one leaves like that, but, but it seems to me that, that, that's the one area in your department where people don't wanna stay.
Right, yeah, and, and that's not, nationwide, that's an issue for Child Protection, it's just one of those caseloads that, you know.
Well, when you're overworked and it's a burnout job by nature, it's, it's tough for people to do it for a long period of time.
Well, and I would imagine you're, in some instances, they're not real popular.
Oh, you know, absolutely, these are not voluntary services.
With who they're dealing with, right?
Yeah.
You know, so I can see where that would be.
Right.
By many, they don't say, gee, come on in, we'd like to come in and help.
Yeah, it's a tough, tough part of the business, so. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, I think your update is all we have left.
Well, we'll keep it very brief. Highway dragon's been addressed, the locking tunnel's been addressed, township officer's been addressed, we had some discussions with the courts and Joe over some improvements that have been made. And then the, the one issue was, I went to St. Paul last week to test, or to visit with a, with a legislator, Representative Cornish, I think his name, yeah, Cornish, Cornish. We're working together on some legislation with Shisago County, and we had an appointment with the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and I think it went as well as could be expected. I know Bruce Mitzel got notification that there would not be a hearing on this at about twelve o'clock. We had our appointment scheduled for one fifteen after we had our meeting. He walked us down to his scheduler and said, why isn't there going to be a hearing on this? So it sounds like we're gonna get a hearing, so at least we can make our case. And what I'm talking about here is the legislation for funding to help for, with the state fund our jail. So, and it was kind of positive, at least maybe, I know it's not a bonding year, but we pleaded with him to at least throw us something for planning purposes and things, and that would really help get us on the docket for a future year, for next year as well, so. And frankly, one of the feedback from the township officers yesterday was the, the individual raised his hand and says, so it sounds like a jail needs to be built. And I said, yes. I think I answered that to the affirmative that it's going to be built. Then he said, why wait? Let's get on with it, let's get it done.
Exactly right.
And, and remember that comment?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gross?
Yeah.
And, and there wasn't really, there wasn't any.
I don't think there was any opposition to it.
Any comment that you don't need a jail, you don't need this, it was just something that was needed, and, and why are we waiting?
Wayne? Yeah. Brian, did it come up as to whether to go with the sales tax or property tax? Wasn't that part of the discussion yesterday?
Yes, it was, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ingersoll. We did, we did talk about that. We said, the, the issue is how we're gonna pay for it. We talked about the wind energy funds and the, and the extra levy that we're putting aside, and then the, the debt, and we said then it comes down to the final piece. If we get some help from the state, that's gonna be really, really good, depending upon amount. Then how do we pay for it? Property tax or sales tax?
One or the other.
Yeah, one or the other. And, and I think that message came across, and, and I, I don't think they wanna see their property taxes increased for it, so I think there would be some good feelings for a sales tax, but there really wasn't any questions, comments on that, was it?
No, I don't think so, I just, I think, like I said, I think the general mood was, let's get it done.
Let's get it done.
I, I think the public understands that we have to have a new jail, and it's, it's not an option that it's going to happen, and, and just, you know, the, the concern will be how we pay for it, but they do understand that it needs to be done, and we'll find a way to do that, so.
And in talking with Shisago County last week, we were talking a little just amongst ourselves about funding these, and I said, have you guys prepared for this? And I talked a little bit about what you guys had done in regards to it, and they said, well, but the only thing we have is what we're spending on out-of-state, or out-of-county boarding right now that we could put towards that. And, and I did mention that at our township meeting yesterday, I said, we're not really earmarking what we're spending, we, we budgeted four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in 2014 to, for out-of-county boarding, but we're not earmarking that for our payments because we feel our, our operating costs are gonna go up, and we don't wanna be deceiving anybody here. We're, we're gonna have extra operating costs, so we are leaving that in the operating side of it. So, but, you know, who knows, there might be some dollars freed up on that. If, if it's an efficient operation, we can probably have some dollars.
We're still talking millions of dollars.
Oh, millions.
A lot of pocket to build a jail.
Oh, yes, yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, anything else? That's it, Mr. Chair.
It'll probably be the largest, largest project that you'll ever vote for to see move forward. Jenny's young, she might see another larger project in the future than this one.
Yeah, she'll be around for the next time a jail needs to be built, so. And she'll, then she'll be about as old as the rest of us by then, so it's.
Nobody's gonna get that old, huh?
Mr. Chair, one more interesting comment that, that was also said was, and what happens in forty or fifty or sixty years when this jail lives out its life? Then there will have to be a new jail, right? So why don't you guys just earmark X amount of dollars to continue to put in to a building fund for the jail so that it doesn't drop off or whatever, 'cause we talked about the, the sales tax and having a sun clause on it, and that is a good idea.
I think that's a good, positive comment.
It is.
Basically setting up an Internal Service Fund account for a jail.
For a jail.
That would, you know, take literally decades to build, but, but.
You.
It's gonna happen again, so.
The, the best way you can try to do that, and then again, I'm gonna tell you to take a look at what Cass County did. And when Cass County did theirs, and they did it through the sales tax option, what they did is they took their current needs, and they understood what the future needs would be for expansion. They incorporated both of those into their funding and financing plan. And so now when they, when they ran the sales tax, they ran their sales tax, and of course in Cass County, they, they raised a lot more money in sales tax, and Clay County will. But they paid for that entire structure, I think with a three-year sales tax. And on top of that, they incorporated just what you were talking about, additional monies for future, and they collected it and set it aside. And now as they move forward and they're having these new pods, they've already built one new pod with that, with that additional money, and, you know, so.
Do the same thing.
Yeah, we could do the same thing, you know, it's, it'd be smart.
Okay, anything else, Brian?
No.
[laughter][1787.91]